Oh. These are the public participation guidelines of the town of the Antiquated for remotely and hybrid open meetings has a four point six hundred. We're using Zoom for this meeting. Zoom has the capability to allow the public to participate in the meeting as an attendee. The chair can request that members of the public provide their names for purposes of keeping accurate minutes of the meeting. Attendees must register to participate. The registration link is unique to the meeting. Registration link can be found in the description of the Antiquated Government TV YouTube Live feed for the meeting. Attendees will join in listening mode. They can click the raise hand button if they wish to speak. The chair will call on those who have raised their hands in the order they were raised. All questions should be directed through the chair. As a preliminary matter, my name is Susan McCarthy and I serve as Chair of Designing Board of Appeals. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lisa Botticelli?
Here.
Alisa Allen?
Here.
Michael O'Meara?
Here.
John Brescher?
Here.
Mark Cor? No. Jim Mundani?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Leslie Snell?
Here.
Nikki Sheriff?
Here.
William Sudd?
Here.
Paul Murphy?
Here.
George Pucci?
Here.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Um, not who's here, but John Chessia?
Here.
John Bracken? No. Alex?
Alexis is here.
But I don't know his last name.
You can just say, um, Alex from, Alex from.
Don't bring yourself with. Bracken Engineering. Alex, you're here. All right, Paul Haverdy?
Present.
Um, I don't know, is Mirica?
Mirica's on.
Mirica Ahern?
Yes, I'm here.
And Kelsey at Workshop APB is here. Yeah. Is it? So Workshop APB?
Yeah, I'm from Workshop here. Kelsey's not able to attend. This is the, I'm at Workshop.
Okay, and I, is that, I think that's everyone. Okay. So, good afternoon. This open meeting of the Town of the Antiquated Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter Two of the Act of two thousand twenty-three. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation. All right, participation unless that participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Appeals is convening in person and by video conference via Zoom map. As posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Be aware that other attendees and viewers may be able to see you. Do not screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit it covers some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate mail-in minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to clearly, sorry, speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to get engaged in a conversation with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Um, so I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals, uh, meeting this Wednesday, June twenty eight, twenty twenty-three at two eighteen PM. Um, would someone make a motion to approve the agenda as drafted?
Still moved.
Second, anyone? And a second Michael, okay. So I'll do a roll call to approve myself, Lisa, Michael, uh, Jim, and John.
Hi.
Okay. Um.
Hi.
Oh, thanks, Lisa. Um, okay, so approval of the minutes from May eighteenth. So I had a bunch of comments on these. Um, we tabled these from Monday so that, uh, Michael and Alisa would have a chance to look at them.
Uh, I'm not sure. I didn't have the choice. Look at them. Just pay to the.
Fine.
Be a priority. Everything going on.
I don't think we even asked for us to table it. Um, so Nikki, I was hoping that, um, or if we're going to table it, uh, that. Can I just give you the edits that I might have?
Yes.
And then, because part of it is like, one is just, I know the translator app, like I was reading out loud, um, condition one thirty-nine and it translated differently. So I'll just, okay, I'll get, let me continue now so I don't forget because I think that caused some.
Um, can I make a motion to continue that? Next.
Well, thank you.
When are we, uh?
I vote.
Can you wait a second, Jim, until I finish giving these to Nikki?
Today.
Today.
That's what I thought.
All right, so here, and just let me.
All right, today.
I think the, just a couple of things that we got given last time. All right, so we have a motion to continue.
Madam Chair, all I was saying, Michael had a question and we weren't, I, I didn't want this to continue without the vote.
So, yeah, no, we're not.
I mean, I, I think you're a little off of order. Amendment for asking for the vote.
I'm not admonishing you for asking for the vote. So we made a motion and Jim made a motion and I think I'll do a second.
I did, I did.
Okay, so, um, we'll continue these until the July thirteenth regularly scheduled meeting and it's a thirteen dessert. Okay, so, uh, myself, I, Lisa?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
And John?
Hi.
Madam Chair, am I voting or?
You are, Alisa. I just, when I went through to approve the agenda, I just, I was looking at my list and I, because you're not sitting next to me, I just missed that you were on Zoom, so. You are voting. Yes, and you are on the vote for, um, so, sorry about that. Okay, so, um, and then Jim made the motion for that, so I had him vote instead of you running. Okay, so we can move on to, um, the first and only matter on the agenda uh, for suicide crossing final site plan engineering review and review of conditions. So before, I just want to say, before we get started, um, I spent a lot of time yesterday going through all the plans, going through all the various, um, versions and updates from Chessia and then all of the versions um, from Brackett where he wrote back on Tessia's, um, forms, his comments, and then Paul Haverdy on a later, um, where Brackett had said, um, information from others or something, and then Paul Haverdy put in his, um, text, I think, in blue of what we could respond to those. And then Billy and Leslie and I met yesterday afternoon and went through all of that together for another two hours and came up with, um, this checklist that Billy had emailed to us all last night that has all of the conditions, um, and whether they're satisfied, there's action required, and if there's action required, who it's from and, and potentially when, and then also if it's not satisfied. Um, at this point, if you look at your, um, packet, the, um, condition number eighteen, Leslie was able to have a conversation with Chessia this morning to, um, get updates on the status of this one. Um, and Chessia said that confirmed that chapter, I'm sorry, not chapter, provision eighteen or condition, rather, is complete. So we can set that.
It's, he online.
He is online in the best. So my suggestion for us today, um, so that we can stay on track and really get accomplished what we need to in a timely manner is to, um, what I would suggest with you is look through at the things that are action required and not satisfied and see how, if we if, if they are just action required that's going to happen at a later point, or whether they are a condition, um, in conflict or deficiency that we want to include, um, in the, and add to the draft letter we have to the developer of what we see as issues with this project.
Madam Chair, in advance of that, can I ask town council some questions?
Um, sure. George, can you, can you, um, answer some questions for Lisa before we start going through the conditions?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm here still.
Okay, um, can you tell me the process if we deny this, this permit? Or, or, I'm gonna, I shouldn't say we, but if.
I apologize, I might have, I might have had a bad connection. I, I missed the question.
What the process would be if the permit gets denied?
Oh, okay, um, it's actually not a permit that you're grant, first of all, good afternoon, everyone. I'm George Pucci from Town Council's office. Um, it, it's not a permit, um, that you're granting. All, what you're doing is you're doing a review, uh, of the proposed final plans for conformance with the conditions of approval and the, uh, revised approved plan set. Um, using both your original decision and, um, taking into account the extent to which it was altered or overruled by the Housing Appeals Committee. And you're using, um, the peer reviewer to, uh, John Chessia to assist you in that technical review. So you're, you're not issuing a permit. You're, you're just issuing a determination whether you find that the, uh, final plans comply. And if not, you know, to note any deficiencies to the developer. So it's not an actual permit that you're granting.
So what is the legal, um, how do we, how do these determinations get, are put into the comprehensive permit? Just via letter that's not recorded?
Right, they, they, they won't be. The, the comprehensive permit, that permitting stuff is recorded. Um, any type of, you know, the, when they go forward and, and have the, you know, a complete plan set and all of that, but there's nothing. Um, your, your review is just part of the process that were conditions of approval. You would originally, um, put a condition in, um, when we did the original comprehensive permit decision that called for a review overseen by the board to confirm compliance. Uh, that was not overruled by HAC, but the HAC, uh, presiding officer amended it a little bit. I think you provided for ninety days and the presiding officer talked about, um, I forget exactly the, the exact wording, but something like reasonably prompt or something like that. And then during this process, you confirmed with the developer that it would be a deadline, um, you know, that satisfied both of those conditions, the ninety days and the reasonably prompt review. Um, so, you know, you, there's no set way that you have to issue a decision on it. Um, you can do it by word of mouth. You can do it by written letter. If you find deficiencies, you can note it in a letter, uh, to the developer. You know, there's a number of ways of doing that. Uh, but there would not be a, it's not a recordable event, your, um, decision, I would, I would recommend against, um, attempting to, you know, file anything against record title. Um, you know, in that regard, that, that just wouldn't be proper. Um, so I, I don't know if that was your question.
Well, not really. I mean, you didn't answer my question. How did, how did these, uh, things that are inconsistent with the hack decision get enforced?
You note the deficiencies to the developer. I, I just, I did answer your question. I said you can do it.
Doesn't comply with the deficiency, how, how do they get, um, enforced?
You would have to seek enforcement. You'd have to, um, either noted, if I can just finish each time, you know, I, I get three words in and you stop me. Uh, so first of all, the answer is, I did answer your question. It's any number of formats that you can issue this determination on the final plan review. By letter, word of mouth, however you want to do it, formal decision. Um, it, then the developer is either going to get back to you and respond to your, you know, noted deficiencies or they're not. And the next step for them will be to, you know, I don't speak for the developer, I don't represent them, but I would presume their next step is to uh, seek a building permit, file an application for a building permit. And then that would be where you're at. So I can't answer a question about how you would enforce something until I know what the enforcement issue is.
Yeah.
So, so, but hold on a second. So did that answer, I, I think, or were you more interested in like, if whatever we decide today, do, does the developer have to comply with the permit?
I would hope that he would have to, given the fact that it's been
Right.
this amount of time going through it, that he would have to comply with that. And I guess that is my question. And if he doesn't, what is the, what, you know, I, I just don't understand the long-term um, effect of a letter or word of mouth determination that they don't comply. What does that do for anybody?
So George.
You, you so far, it, yep.
George, can I just, so I understand from what Lisa's saying and what yours saying, um, that the ZBA role is to one, we ask for this technical review period to be able to make sure that this complies. Where we see it doesn't comply, we give notice however we want, written, oral, whatever, to the building department who is going to be charged with receiving an application for a building permit and will then make that decision. The applicant through this permit is required, just like anyone else, to comply with, um, any of the conditions in here, the conditions of MIPA, the conditions of NHGSP, the ADA rules. Um, and other than the, um, change or the the change in zoning or the relief, the automatic relief for zoning, they're still required to comply as any other applicant would to all these other conditions. And if they don't comply, the enforcement arm, either for Z, through ZBA bringing it to their attention, a butter's bringing it to attention, or inspectors bringing it to the attention of the town, that, that whatever agency in the town will then seek enforcement to have the applicant or the developer comply with the conditions of the town. Is that correct?
That's correct, but that's a slightly different question.
I think that's what I'm trying to. That's what I'm trying to get to.
I think that's what Lisa was trying to ask.
Condition, conditions of approval that are in effect, if the developer ends up going ahead and violating them, that's a zoning issue, a zoning enforcement issue that you would issue a enforcement letter and then they would respond to that and you would potentially take zoning enforcement action on that. And then if the, the applicant didn't apply, didn't comply with that, you would then seek select board approval to file an action for injunctive relief to have a condition of approval enforced. But that's very different from the context that you're in with this, with this final plan review. That's why I'm saying I, I, you know, I need to know what the enforcement issue is that you're talking about before I can give you an answer. So what I'm saying, that the context that you're in right now is, it's a condition in the permit that the developer before seeking a building permit has to come before you and provide you a set of final plans and give you the opportunity to determine whether or not those final plans comply with all conditions of approval with the approved plan set. If they don't, you would note those deficiencies to the developer. And I wouldn't do it by word of mouth. I, I was giving kind of trying to show that there is a number of ways of doing it. I would formally notify them in writing. If you, if in fact you end up that you have deficiencies that you've noted, give it to them in writing and see what their responses, depending on what their responses would be, would depend on, you know, what your next step would be. But that, that would be different than the developer not complying with a certain condition. Those are two very separate things.
Okay, so one is pre-building permit and one is post-building permit. And so I think your plan, the option that we've been exploring is, and we've been working on is a letter to the developer with the things that we have noted. So, um, Jim, I know you said you had a question and so, but I really would like to get to the meat of this.
Jim, I asked you a question. I have.
I'm just saying, I, I, I just want, if we don't get through, this is it, this is our last meeting. So if we don't get through the conditions, then we have nothing to get to.
I just want to have a poll question because you, you mentioned all these conditions, MIPA, um, you know, all these different ABA. What happens if we're looking at a set of drawings and, you know, right now we have conditions that are in conflict with each other? We were just given a plan last, on Monday, that shows a different parking count than even the letter that Mr. Haverdy sent yesterday. So I'm, I'm confused a little bit. So, um, so what, how do we deal with those conditions when they're in conflict with each other?
Right, my, my answer to.
That shows that, so.
Right, and it's a technical review. So what my recommendation is, is you have to go by as best you can by the recommendations of your engineer peer reviewer. And, and you have to, you have to give him the opportunity to look at what the approved plan set is. And if the final, proposed final plan complies with that. And that's a different issue. If, if there had to be an amendment to a plan or a modification because of some subsequent permitting act, then that calls into question about modifying potentially the approved plan set. But before you get to that question, you need to determine whether the final plans that are before you, first of all, identifying what all of them are. And if any, anything's missing in terms of a final plan that has been submitted or not submitted. And with the guidance of the technical review by the engineer peer reviewer, you have to make a determination. Does the, does this particular plan conform with the approved plan set? And that's about, that's the best you can do.
My fault. John Chessia? On that question.
Right, with, with John's guidance.
Yeah, okay. So John, are you, Lisa has a question for you?
I think I understand the question. Um, and I think that the applicant submitted a new plan that I saw emailed to me today. Is that correct, Mr. Haverdy?
That is correct, Mr. Chessia.
So a plan came in today differed from the one that I reviewed prior. Um, I did look at it briefly. I can't say that I gave it a thorough review, but I believe what that plan did is to reconcile the parking between the HAC Exhibit Three plan, um, that was submitted on Monday and change the plans to reflect that parking. Um, I did get a look at the Exhibit Three plan and compared it to the, um, I believe, June twenty-second plan. So the basic change is the elimination of certain parking spaces that were highlighted in the red on that Exhibit Three plan. So the plan that I, is before the board today, I believe, is the one dated June twenty-sixth, which just came in, literally just came in as an email this morning to me.
Yeah, with the blue. But then I would ask the question, if the fire department said, there's something here that said, oh, interest rates, streets, yards and shop have no parking, part of them.
And I think if you read.
So that, what one is. The one that this came in is.
But that's from, that's just the letter from, that's the letter that I didn't have. That's what they sent this morning.
They read the letter. Maybe. Right, so, Madam Chair, can I try to provide some clarity here?
Yes, I just want to, just one second. Um, so, so, so. So, what, what, which time, which one was that?
So before we start chasing butterflies, which is what happens in this, uh, obfuscation, and we stick to some, not start chasing plans that were delivered today. Um, let's make note of the fact that plans were delivered on the day we're supposed to make a decision. That's unacceptable. That's unreasonable. That doesn't, uh, does not give us a reasonable time frame to do this. Um, the fire department letter was delivered to us today, stated May ninth. I know for a fact that it was delivered to Leslie, it was delivered to our town manager, and it was delivered to the police, I mean, the fire chief on May ninth, and we're seeing it today, and I'm really concerned about that. And don't understand why it's been held up. We had a fire last year and looking at it in this context, I don't think this board should be putting their, their name on any decision when they've held this review until today, and we're supposed to make it in, in the next five minutes. And lives are at stake. And, and you want to just do it because they didn't deliver it to us. How many should have not delivered to us? I want it to be on there. I want it to be noted. Secondly, George, I went through and read the decision because unfortunately you're not giving us enough information on the decision. But everything you said is not in, in the HAC's decision. So where are you coming up with this? Let me, let me quote from the decision. "The decision of the board is vacated and the board is directed to issue an amended comprehensive permit as provided in the text of this decision and the conditions below." They directed us to repair an amended permit which is a master permit for this whole project. Which is some, which is important because we file it with the town clerk, it runs with the land, and it gets to what Lisa's talking about. There's notice, you can look at it, you can, can measure that. What you're saying is we can do this word of mouth. That was your advice. Or as one of the options. But what I'm saying, the hack decision specifically directs us to prepare an amended comprehensive permit. Because there are issues that it didn't address or conflict. What, what, what we're com, well, the problem here, and it, it took me till last night to figure this out, is we're doing a final plan review, which is actually after the permit is, is, is administered and filed with the town clerk. We're doing everything at once, which is incorrect. I mean, I'm happy to look at the final plans and make comments and go back and forth. But this final, they don't need to have final plans by the date the amended permit is in. It's an after, it's, it's an after the fact. We don't have an amended comprehensive permit. And if you're suggesting that someone is supposed to read the two together, then I suggest that they watch our meetings over the past ninety days because it's impossible. And you're setting this up so that no one really has stake in the ground to measure what needs to get done on a major development. And I don't think anything will be done on the planning board. So my question for you, George, is what's your view of that conclusion and that sentence from the decision that I read?
I'm, I'm waiting for your question to finish because you're, I'm trying my best not to interrupt you today. Is your question finished?
George, the decision of the board is vacated and the board is directed to issue an amended comprehensive permit as provided in the text of the decision and the conditions. What we've done is, go ahead. What's your view on it?
Well, there are many twists and turns to the speech that you just gave, many of which are not accurate. The long and the short of it is the answer to your question, you've already had this provided to you for several months, and I don't know why the board keeps returning these procedural issues. You're only hurting yourself in terms of the substantive review that you need to complete. And so what that decision said is you issue a new uh, permit, and if you don't, this will serve as the permit. You didn't issue a new permit, you appealed, which was in your right to do. The select board at some point in time did not authorize you to continue that appeal, so the appeal, appeal is over. So the HAC decision is the operative document. But for the parts of the original, uh, decision of the zoning board were not overturned by the HAC or were modified. And very early on in this process, your technical review consultant, uh, and engineering consultant went through it with painstaking detail comparing the HAC decision with the original conditions of approval and noting to you where you ended up in terms of what was required for a final plan set to compare to the, what ended up being the conditions of approval. And that, that's where you're at. There's nothing yet from this process that's incorrect or unfair or anything like that. And there's nothing that comes from this particular process. that's incorrect or unfair or anything like that, and there's nothing that comes from this particular process in the, in the stage of review that ends up being a recordable decision. You're just rendering a determination to the applicant if the final plans comply, and if you think you got a plan too late or a plan is missing, then I recommend you note that to the developer.
Well, I think you've put us in really bad this, uh, position, because it's-
How did I put you in a bad position?
Decision of the board is vacant, the decision of the board is vacated, and the board is directed to issue amendment permit, and you're telling me, well,
You're garbling, I don't know if it's my connection.
I can't hear him either, George.
Yeah, no, his, he was garbled.
Uh, one second.
Can you hear me?
Carry you now, let's, okay, go ahead, Jim. Can you hear us, um?
Decision board was vacated, what does that mean, George?
I just explained it to you, it was vacated, and they issued, they ordered you to issue a new decision, not with new, uh, evidence or new conditions. It's a new decision that conformed with the HAC order, which basically means you reissue what the HAC ordered. You didn't do that, you appealed, and I, and I told you, you're not the first person in history to appeal an HAC decision, it happens all the time. A board does not issue a new decision within the thirty days. And alternatively, they appeal within thirty days, and that preserves your rights, uh, to appeal that decision. That appeal was dismissed at one point in time, as we've gone through at length, and you've met with the select board now about that. And so that appeal is dismissed. So the HAC decision ends up the operative permit document. And the conditions of approval from your original decision, to the extent they were not struck or modified, are still in effect. And the part that I take strong exception to is to try to imply that you've been left in some type of uh, improper place, because at the beginning of this process, the peer review technical engineer went through the two decisions and put it out in painstaking detail to you about what the final conditions of approval were, so that that final plan review could be done. So I'm, I'm not understanding, except, you know, to, for rhetorical purposes, what the issue is, what, what the objection is. And again, if you've gotten something that you think is too late or is incomplete, you've got to note it to the developer. So I haven't took you in any place, you were provided everything that you-
Technical review, the technical review has to do with final plans. But we don't even have a comprehensive permit to do the conference, to do the final review. The letter and everything we've done with Joe, with Chesia relates to the final plans, but that happens after the amended permit is filed with the, uh, uh, voted on file. And, and the appeal only have, relates to appealing this decision, but we, we need to do an amended permit to incorporate the decision, and it needs to be filed with the town clerk.
This, for the third time, okay, that's not how it works. Hold on, en- enough of, of, of this game, you were provided it at the beginning. The peer review engineer put out in painstaking detail, as I said, a comparison between the two decisions and what ended up being the final conditions of approval. That's the procedural posture you're in. What you're saying is completely inaccurate, and you need to stop. And I would recommend you go ahead with completing the plan review. And if you have deficiencies, note them to the applicant.
Okay, I think that, uh, Town Council has said the, has told us this seventeen different ways. And we, we-
What is seventeen different ways, is it, uh, I don't know what that means.
It's now fifteen fifty.
Show me seventeen different ways.
Come on, it's exaggeration to make a point.
Well, that's not, this is the- This is an important decision.
You're making up a process that isn't the process. We had the opportunity to appeal.
Right.
We chose to appeal instead of going and making an amended, uh, 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 permit.
I understand.
And incorporating the conditions that were approved, because we didn't like those conditions. We lost that avenue, so now this is the process we're in. The technical review ends today.
Technical review, I'm, I'm fine.
And the, and the plans that we are going to base this off of are what the word final plans keeps being thrown around, but it is the plans that we have been given by the developer as they are now. Those are the only ones we can make a decision on, and we can li- list the deficiencies and between those and the permit, and we hired a consultant who went through and did this exercise for us. I spent a lot of time, I know staff has spent a lot of time, they put together this giant packet that we asked for on Monday or today. The poverty can address this, but I went through yesterday, and I, when I was looking at, um, because one of the deficiencies I had was this parking issue. Um, and when I read back through the comp permit, I believe it's Condition forty-four says that it has to be in compliant, whatever is in the, the, the hack decision has to be in compliance with ADA and other federal regulations, and it also has to be in compliance with any MIPA or N H E S P permits. And as far as that is, they'll, will be incorporated into the plan, so as of last night, even without seeing this new plan or Haverly's letter, um, to me, I think we, we know that the, the parking numbers are kind of all over the place. But, and I don't know, because I don't have, um, Exhibit seventy-two or what was fired, filed or agreed to on July thirty-first as an, as a uh, insubstantial change, um, and perhaps, uh, George Fucci can confirm that for us, but it seems based on the language of the permit that, that, they have to, uh, the permit has to, or the plans have to comply with ADA, MIPA, and, and H E S P, and then it's going to be up to the developer to figure out how to reconcile what the ADA requires versus the open space that MIPA requires, and how they're going to work that out, but I think we-
And that, and that's a final, that's a final plan review that, so that the, the building department has a plan to go on.
And that'll continue to go on, so can we please go through and let's talk about real issues, and if we want, if we have time at the end and we want to go back to procedure, we can go back to procedure, but it is now almost three o'clock, and we have not even looked at one.
I just think, I want to reframe this because we're getting pushed down as, uh, an avenue that is not correct. And if you want to go through to the conditions, for instance, if you increase the size of the building, that's an amendment. As an example, that, are you telling me that the, George, you're telling me that the um, in the decision, that extra square footage was approved by hack?
Jim, Jim, we already went through that, meetings and meetings and meetings.
That's fine, that's fine, it's been jammed out of its throat.
The, the permit says Exhibit Three trumps. So Exhibit Three shows the, the building that's three thousand nine hundred and twelve feet, where we said, I think we wanted a thousand feet.
Yeah.
The, the revised per, the revised plan shows three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five feet, which de minimis, no, yes, we can put it in there, hey, they don't match, that has to be reconciled. But at this point, it's, we don't, we don't have the ability, um, and we don't have the authority anyway to make those changes.
I, I think we, we can reject the changes. So a year, I think a year from now, they come and expand the building by a hundred feet, what, we just do it?
No, we can say no, at that point.
Say no here, because it differs from.
We can't say no here, because hack approved Exhibit Three showing three thousand nine hundred and twelve feet. If we want to say no, we're going to hold it to three thousand nine hundred and twelve feet, and you can't have three, three nine seven fives. Like, we can say that.
Well, the recreation building is sixty-three square feet larger than Exhibit Three.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah, we can hold, we can, we can say, that's, they, they've explained that it's a change in construction methodology, but okay, but we can still say, okay, well, we wanted a thousand, you got three thousand nine hundred and twelve, and make it work at three thousand nine hundred. Or I may be saying the number wrong, sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I don't, I don't mean to belabor this, but, well, I actually had a question about fifteen A as well, so the recreation building is sixty-three feet longer, and I, I, I'm well going through this exercise, as painstaking as it may be, just so we know exactly what we're dealing with. Okay, it's sixty-three feet larger, we'll note it, note it as a deficiency on the plan. If they constructed sixty-three feet larger than what the HAC decision says, don't they have to go in for a modification?
I believe so.
So maybe be back, so maybe, so they'd be back, just, I mean, all we're doing, I think, is just saying, hey, this either complies or it doesn't, and if it doesn't, we're not blessing it, we're just pointing out to you that you got a problem, we're not going to bless the problem.
Right.
You can either address the problem now, or you can address it in the future through a modification. This is just sort of saying, hey, this is what we found. And, and even if there is something in here, I mean, they are bound, regardless of this review, I think. They're bound by the HAC decision, so if there are changes that we know or don't know, and they have to go into a mo, for a modification, that's-
Yes.
Okay.
So can I clarify, with regards to the parking, they're held, the parking on Exhibit seventy-two, whatever that is, we don't know what that is, right? All references.
It says, this plan was introduced as Exhibit Seventy-two, I don't know if it's hearing.
I thought it was, I thought it was Exhibit Three is what we determined lots of you know on one day, that Seventy-two.
I, I thought so too, but.
And that says three hundred and eight square parking, so they will have to provide three hundred and eight.
Right, but I, I think, I think John's point is well taken, instead of us getting caught up in the minutia of like, is it fifty, is it fifty-six, is it three hundred, is it two ninety-one, we just say, hey, you, this is, it says it's this, your plans are saying all these-
I know, I just want to clarify, because I want to understand what the, what, I want to understand that they're being held to three hundred and eight parking. No matter what happens with MIPA, if MIPA says, you know, if they go back and something happens, or they don't have, they haven't met the-
They're, they're being held to-
And they're impervious to the ADA regulation, if something goes wrong, and they can't, and they can't meet all that stuff and still get three hundred and eight parking spaces, they need to come back to us.
Yes, unless I think it's the, yes, and I think they'll have to make ADA and MIPA and the hack decision somehow were meshed.
Or else they have to come back to us.
They come back to us, yeah.
Right, so if they don't mesh, they're coming back to us.
And I, I believe, and I may be wrong, but I would think if they decide they want to, you'll have to come back to us, yes, George?
Yeah, I, I just want to interrupt, and then I promise I'll be quiet, is, I, I just want to reiterate what John just said, he, he explained it very perfectly, what, where, what stage you're at. So you're, you're there to either say everything complies, or to note any deficiencies that you see or inconsistencies. And then instead of trying to predict the future of what the applicant's going to do in response about, that, that would really be your focus at this point, okay. Plan, if I'm referring to Exhibit Three, and I'm using that for, just for discussion hypothetical purposes, if I'm looking at Exhibit Three, and I know that that is the final part of the final plan set approved by HAC, and I find that there are issues of compliance with Exhibit Three, then I need to note that to the applicant. That's, that's what you're doing here.
Okay, well, I appreciate John bringing up the fact that anything that differs from that on our list, they do have to come back and get approval from us, because that was-
The same, that was never made clear. The same as every other.
It wasn't-
Well, that, but that's, oh, that's overstated, though, if the, if there's, again, it's tough to predict the future. There, the applicant is going to get your determination, and then they're going to decide what they want to do with it. If it is something that is actually a modification of an approved plan that they had to do, yes, they would have to seek a modification. But
And then don't we-
Only in that specific instance, so not necessarily for everything you know.
Right, and then we also make the determination when they come back for something, whether it's substantial or insubstantial. Right, like that's a different level, so.
Right, and the other-
Through all that.
The other part, just, you know, for you to realize where you're at. You, you, whatever you issue on this, remember, this is going to end up, the applicant um, is or is not going to respond to your comments. Um, and is either going to submit further information or bring something into compliance to satisfy you, or agree, yes, that's deficient, I'm going to correct X, Y, Z. But their next step beyond, be, after you is to go and seek a building permit. And then you're not really going to have say over that determination, when the building inspector looks at the, his, the final proposed plan set to get a building permit, that's going to be within the province of the building inspector at that point. And that's the only reason I keep trying to bang the drum of try to do a thorough substantive review of the technical review issues so that you have some say in that process before it goes over to the building inspector.
He's not in charge, I want to bring in, uh, ask George one more question.
Okay, then I want to move on to thirteen.
The second item of the decision, the final, George says, I think the conclusion.
Which one, the hack decision?
Yeah. The amended comprehensive permit issued by the board conform to the application submitted by the board, the board's original decision and modified proposal that was subject to the hearing. So what is that amended comprehensive permit? And I'm not, I'm not even bringing up, uh, we're, we're beyond the appeal.
Where are you, Jim, what page? Forty-two?
Forty-two.
Amendment, oh, number two.
What is the amended?
We didn't, we didn't issue an amended comprehensive, we appealed this decision.
Right, and, and both the decision and-
The decision, and the decision said, we're following the decision.
No, you're following the, you're following the HAC decision.
Which says the amended comprehensive permit issued by the board, where is the amended comprehensive permit?
No, in this procedural posture, you did not, you you did not issue an amended decision in conformance of the HAC decision. For, so now this is for the fourth time. The HAC decision is the operative document, and your original conditions of approval are in effect to the extent they were not stricken or modified by the HAC. And that's what I'm saying to you, was provided, the initial analysis to you was a painstaking analysis comparing uh, the, the HAC conditions of approval and the extent to which your original conditions, uh, were amended or stricken. And that's the operative, uh, uh, set of rules and guidelines that you're going to go by, uh, for this. It doesn't call for, in this procedure, it does not call for you to issue an amended permit decision before you can do this final review. You have to do it in accordance with the HAC decision.
And the HAC decision says an amended comprehensive permit. When we drop the appeal, we follow the decision, and we go, uh, as a director of the HAC.
Right, and the thirty days is run, which means the HAC decision is the operative document.
George, we need to move, I, I appreciate you, we need to move on.
Thirty days, I want to know what the thirty days was.
Oh, Madam Chair, I, I would direct board member Mondani's attention to paragraph eight of the Housing Appeals Committee decision on page forty-three, which states, should the board fail to carry out this order within thirty days, then pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-B, Section twenty-three in seven sixty C M R fifty-six point zero seven subsection six, subsection A, this decision for all purposes shall be deemed the action of the board. So that becomes the permit, that is how Chapter forty-B works.
And that's what we're trying to do, that's what we're trying to avoid by doing this process, Jim, today, is that if we don't have anything to give them saying any deficiencies, this is just cart lunch.
The thirty days is over, is what he's saying.
Yeah.
And it's, it's issued.
No, the, the-
Wait, wait a minute, what? I, I said the same thing five times.
We're not, I don't want to get into back and forth, we're, we're done, I, we're done having this conversation.
When, when the appeal was drawn, we have thirty days to issue a decision in accordance with hack, and we didn't, you didn't tell us.
You've had thirty-
We have thirty days from when, when the-
You didn't have that, that's why I didn't tell you that. I wouldn't tell you something that's incorrect.
The appeal, the appeal period tolls the time, that's pretty clear.
The time has run, and the regulations for you to issue an amended decision. The HAC document is the operative document.
There is, there's actually pretty substantial case.
Or you can hear it from the applicant's attorney, whichever one, but you're, you're just saying something that isn't correct, and you keep saying it over and over again, like it's going to be, become true, but it isn't.
I just wanted to go back.
So, okay, so we're moving on from the procedural parts, and we're going to just go through these things, so we're going to start with thirteen E. Is there anyone that, anything, I didn't have anything but for that. Noting that the, um, for the building department, that the proposed plan doesn't comply with the parking number don't comply with Exhibit Three hundred and thirty-five.
So, Madam Chair, can I address that, please?
Well, you can, but I know, I think I know that you're going to say that it was the MIPA decision, and uh, but at this point, we're just, we're-
It's, it's not- It's it's not just the MIPA decision, Madam Chair, the the Housing Appeals Committee approved a modification to the plan set. And that plan set reduced the number of parking spaces from the original modification number of two ninety-nine to two hundred and ninety-one with an additional ten spaces land banked. Um and and it's spelled out in detail in the modification decision. And that becomes the operative set of plans, a- as was determined by the Housing Appeals Committee decision. So that is the correct plan set that you should be reviewing as it relates to the number of parking spaces. And so what was submitted depicts the two hundred and ninety-one spaces, what was left out.
What was submitted, the one that's updated June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
So so that one, they they both depict the the two hundred and ninety-one spaces, the the one that was just submitted this morning shades out the ten spaces that are proposed as being land banked um until and and if it's necessary to construct them. But at the end of the day, it's still the same two hundred and ninety-one spaces, and it's consistent with the plan that was in front of the Housing Appeals Committee and was approved by the Housing Appeals Committee.
Oh, and exhibit four. But it's but it's contrary to exhibit three.
Exhibit three was the original set of modification plans that was subsequently changed.
Right, so so again, as much as um I don't want to get into the minutia of um of the uh the procedural, what Jim was saying earlier, what did you say, chasing butterflies? Yeah, I don't want to do that right now with the parking, I spent a lot of time looking at plans yesterday. The parking numbers look different to me on different plans that have been submitted. The plan that we got on Monday, which was just, oh, whoops, we never showed you this, we're going to mark it as a deficiency, and it's up for you, you and the building department and can figure that out. If it complies with the half decision, fine, it's not an issue. If it doesn't, you'll have to figure that out, but as far as I can tell, and I don't have a copy of the modified decision or the um or and the anything that was approved um determining that it was insubstantial, I didn't see that in the hack decision, so I do know that the hack decision says it has to comply with um ADA, MIPA, and any NHESP, and so let I don't want to look at seventy-five thousand plan.
Can I ask uh Mr. Chesia a question? So, I just wanted to clarify on these comments, so there's the parking in the parking condition, minimum two omelet spaces and for three to four bedrooms at a minimum, or three. And is that could that be met based on the plans that you received?
So, where are you looking at the?
So their basic part, their basic parking uh minimums that were not struck thirteen E.
Okay, so the HAC decision basically scratched that to what I understood to be exhibit three, which was submitted to me by the applicant's team, is I didn't have that to start. I was never given the exhibit that had the reduced parking until I got an email uh after Monday's meeting, so.
But I think.
The team did not, the the applicant did not provide me with the correct parking plan, there the HAC scratched any minimum number per lot or anything like that, and just stuck to the plan. The downside is they didn't give us the plan that was the the basis of the HAC decision. And I agree with uh the chair that we should go with what we were given to review. And that was the two hundred and ninety-nine, and that's different than what the recent plans provided showed HAC approved.
Hmm. And I think E was struck because it's not, it doesn't matter, because this is talking about different lots, and there's only one lot now, so those minimums don't.
It was a, yeah, totally different design, no single-family lots, all condominiums, et cetera.
Right.
Exhibit three shows three hundred and eight spaces, not hundred ninety-nine.
Right, so we're saying that's, so that's, that is a deficiency, the the plan approved by hack that was referenced is exhibit three, they didn't, they don't say anything about this July thirty-first, twenty twenty plan that shows the reduced parking, so we didn't.
In our letter.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Okay.
Are we going to edit it live or no?
Um, I think we should go through as much as we can, make notes as we can, and if we want to go back and do um so we can try to do that, so um so. What?
What that?
Uh, he did forty, it should be there somewhere. Okay, so fifteen A, talking about the recreating the building, um we determined early on in our meeting that exhibit three trumps the plan that's approved, but it does say the three thousand nine hundred and twelve square feet and the current site plan has turned three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square feet. Um so what I heard from the board already, how we talked a little bit about sixteen-three square feet, we want to note a deficiency um on the plan that does not match um what was approved by PAC. Does anyone have anything else to add on fifteen A?
Well, the only wording that I would add was insufficient guest parking.
So. Um, so then you moved on to um the next one where we had a. A.
Can I just go back fifteen G?
Sure.
So the high exterior architectural design subject to final review and approval by the board prior to issuance of building permit.
So, yeah.
And then Mr. Jesse says you don't have final construction laws.
So we have the art, that that note says the architectural plans have not been provided, but um we do have the architectural plans were submitted, um were submitted, and um the hack decision does say that when it went mentioned to the board or I mentioned the board uh or the building department or whatever, means the most, like the applicable agency under most followed by person like it. So, we did get the architectural plans, um.
Exhibit four?
Um, yeah, I think it was exhibit four, because Chesh, remember, we got those later.
Yeah.
So, she is.
Do you have a gym, so apparently hack approved exhibit four, which shows the architectural, the materials. We apparently, we made note that the roof has to be asphalt as an exhibit four, not metal.
And that's under twenty-eight.
Which one is that?
Um. So we'll go. For, we got it only about a month ago. I don't know if this is pathological.
Without, we have.
There are more mine.
So is that uh is is Mr. Jesse saying that that has been satisfied?
He says no further engineering comment, so I guess so.
Oh, well, the ones above it say, he says no further comments, but in, he makes comments that are.
Right, but those were, I believe, there aren't those earlier, like we we added in comments, and then the most recent are the highlighted blue, so.
So is that satisfying, Mr. Judge?
So, I never got the architectural plans, but I'm not an architect, don't typically review them, except I would look at some aspects compared to the civil. Um, so if you've been, if you've received final architectural plans, then that would be addressed, but the building department ultimately would review those plans for consistency with building requirements, I think that that's the way that would be handled.
Yeah, I think the only change from exhibit four to the architectural plans, which should be noted, is that we but it comes up in the drainage part, is that um downspouts and gutters were required.
Yeah.
And that's different from the original.
Exhibit four.
Exhibit four doesn't show that.
But they're on.
Yeah, so just making sure that all is back, it's come, that's what's hard in not having final drawings to review, because it's there's so many pieces that are hard.
But it's it's in, it's it was in here, and it's in one of brackets.
As long as it's covered, yeah, you know, I'm just saying, it doesn't, exhibit four shouldn't overrule that note.
Yeah.
Architectural.
So.
Does that satisfy you for?
I just want to make sure when it says final review approved by the board, you're saying it's not board, I mean, and Mr. Chat, we hired Mr. Chess, I mean, he says that's not.
He says he typically doesn't do the architectural review with sign, but that'll.
Who doesn't?
Well, usually the HTC would do that, but because hack already approved exhibit four, it seemed that we didn't have that option.
And that's fine, because that's fine.
I don't know, we have a choice.
Yeah, I don't know if it's fine or not.
For sure, it's fine, but we don't have a choice.
That's part of the forty B.
Yeah.
Although in past forty B developers have given us.
They've offered to go to the HTC, but not all of them.
Well, and all the ones that I've been on in the past fifteen years, they have, so. Anyway, so I think that that's a that's a completed issue, Jim, as long as they incorporate the downspouts and the gutters and the roof material that we already.
Yeah, so the material, I think we did under twenty-eight. Um, but we can make a note to just, you know, ensure that the gutters are, because they weren't showing on.
Again, we don't really have a complete set of final drawings. I have them, I have them here, but they're all. And but and they're shown on the journey, and I think, right?
Yeah, they're shown on a plan because we checked it, I remember we checked it out, and we had asked for them to show it, and then they showed it on.
But but just for Paul's, it's Paul here, just for his edification, he'll have this list.
Hmm.
And so it'll be very clear that downspouts and gutters to to dry walls were reflected.
Hmm.
And that he'll be able to make that connection to make sure they're shown. I mean, there's going to be a lot of you, it's a lot, for you to go back and forth on, so.
Okay. Um, the next one that we had a differential on was the sidewalk materials mentioned in seventeen F. The sidewalk materials are consistent with a lot of types on on island, or typical type of locations differ from the exhibit three plan approved by the Housing Appeals Committee, and I think we may have addressed this having to do with um the because they had, along with the impervious surfaces increased because they had to do some ADA compliance, but it's just, again, to know this is a a straying away from the approved plan on these subsequent matters. We can shut that door this morning, yeah.
So, I just, if I can ask the building commissioner, so how would you how would you enforce that if they put in something that differed? I, well, I bring all this attention and um you know, yeah, since you have the opportunity to either, well, you either have to fix it or um you know, we'll go back and report it to be considered, okay?
Okay, um, so then the next one, and anybody stop me along the way, if there's one that you have a question about, or one that you had flagged on your own that we, that's if not here, um, the next one I have is twenty-eight. That. Um. This is again about the roofing material options, um, the roofing material, the asphalt, the option that the floor was solar, will require a modification of the comprehensive permit. Just to have that out there, so if that if that plan to to put solar and moves forward, that will come back.
Twenty-nine, Parkinson's, the fire department.
So this is for action needed for the fire department, to make sure that there's um adequate snow storage.
The hard part with the party CEO is because the buildings will be built. There's something you can do, and at that point, if they don't have adequate area. Just making that comment.
So thirty, um, this is for us, trash barrels stored out of view, the exterior air conditioning units, this and the other thing. Um, so the plan we have shows details for these trash recycling enclosures, um.
They're not, it's a response to the hack.
Right.
Approved plan.
Right, so we so we have that to be, and then we also, um.
And the board requests having the one plan that that incorporates everything on one plan, the new proposed. This is this is.
I I don't.
One location so that everybody understands what's happening.
No, I think that, I think we don't have the opportunity to do that, because today's, but I think there there will be final plans submitted to the building department.
Right, we have that, yeah, we have those plans to incorporate everything on one plan. So that it's easy for Paul to look at, and he's not flipping to find the landscape plan versus the.
I mean, I I don't know how, I mean, you know, who submits stuff for building permits, like.
But it's it's a it's a house, it's not, you know, two hundred and eighty-three bedrooms, it's a very different process, so I just, I don't know if we could just request that to make it easier, since this shows up as an inconsistency with what we've been looking at.
Yeah, but we can put something like that in the letter, saying that the board requests that all of these.
The landscape plan be updated to show the correct parking.
Yeah, that they all be.
Right, well, what is the correct parking, I guess, that's.
So, um. So then we have thirty-six, so forty-six is the is the um difference in the opinion on the G P A um regulations, um.
The numbers.
It's thirty-six. And we have um a revised revised. So, we had talked about incorporating into our letter, the um I want, I'm, this would be was the appendix A, and you want to. It's under by, probably since Monday, but my, because it, my understanding. My understanding was that the My understanding was that the the proposed and and Mr. Tessa, please, if I have this wrong, but the proposed. The applicant's proposed um. Compliance with D E P stormwater regulations, they don't. Do they have anything that's in violation of regulations right now?
So the way that uh, you know, their response versus my review is a difference of opinion. Uh, there are limited detailed descriptions for these subsurface systems. I would. Argue they're not a drywell because there is a detail for dry well that they they would be more of a subsurface infiltration system, a chamber system. Which does not have a specific setback listed. What what my basis is is that most of those sort of reference back to an infiltration trench. But it's not, I would say it's not a hard and fast rule. I sort of stick by my opinion because I use that same opinion all over the state with questions asked on all different kinds of projects and all different kinds of soils. Reality of the systems that are below the slab elevation, it's unlikely they're going to impact a foundation in a basement. Um, because even if they're closer, they aren't gonna be able to go. Above the ground to flood the basement because they're below the ground and you have a lot of groundwater separation, so uh. I mean, I want to throw that back to the board because. I don't want someone citing me in another town saying that I think that that's a good idea in Nantucket and. You know, not in Duxbury, so uh, I tend to be consistent with my comments. I do have um, specific. Comments on three of them, which is in appendix A that I think would be worth noting. Uh, I, as I understand it, according to the responses, is that it's pretty common practice in Nantucket to have these systems. Closer to foundations than twenty feet, so um, frequently if that's the uh, what the town does as a, you know. Common thing, you can't sort of change it for somebody else if you've been doing it for everyone for years, so I kinda defer to local knowledge on that. Um, I do think though that the in appendix A, there's two systems that are essentially. Right against a retaining wall and the footing would impact it. I think those should be revised and. System one A and the larger stormwater management area one are only four feet apart and four feet difference in elevation. So you dig one up to repair it and you're going to impact the other, and I think that would be a relatively simple modification to provide about ten feet between them so that they could be. Repaired independent of damage to the other. We require relocating a manhole, I think, and that's about it. I don't think that too much problem or too much to uh, require. I hope that.
System two D.
Or the. Appendix A. Number thirty six. But Madam Chair, I'll explain, just. Just need to know that there's the the.
We're going on record. As Mr. Jack, it's a different opinion, so it's on paper, so.
Yep. Yeah, and certainly I thought we had talked about, unless I was looking for my notes, I thought we had talked about perhaps attaching the appendix A. Um, the most recent one. Just to.
Miss his comment.
His comments. So forty five grating is incomplete, cross sections and block them. Yeah, sorry.
Do we need number thirty eight as well?
Thirty eight, oh, the impervious areas and that fluctuation, um.
Because I feel like depending on the parking plan.
Right, so this can go.
And there's ground cover, it's definitely certain.
Right, so thirty we can say is sufficient, um, because the impervious. The impervious areas don't match. And this, there's, I read two different numbers yesterday. I read. Um, one place that it was an increase of four percent and one place that it was an increase of eight percent, so. You know, there's depending on the plan or the date, kind of similar with the parking, that needs to be reconciled.
So what about? Forty.
The soil testing the applicant has to do that, they are required to do that.
Pride ability limit.
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, so we don't have to list that as being deficient because they have.
They have, they have to do that to comply with the terms of their.
Yeah, Madam Chair, isn't that, isn't that basically, you know, do we need to list all, everything that says A on it?
No, because that's that's the applicant's responsibility. That's why we, that's. That was sort of the exercise we did yesterday so that we going forward. We can check off, these are things the applicant is responsible for, these are things the building department is responsible, the fire department want to comment, CBA, and so it'll be clear.
Going back to thirty eight, we haven't checked this.
I I will thank you.
Well, we have it checked. Because they have, they'll have to imply. The increase that they, the response from the, from the applicant was that the increase was due to um, ADA compliance where they had to put in ramps and things like that. Which may be true and may be fine, but at this point, it's it's. It's not, it doesn't match with the plan, so we can note that.
I wouldn't say it's satisfied.
Yeah, I would agree. It's not satisfied. It doesn't match, so it should be pointed out, yeah. So the yellow mark should be taken off, I think, because it's conflicting with. Coverage in this increase of future infarct rate and for footage and the number of spaces. So that all should be coordinated.
Right, so. But the MIPA review and then that's so that the the MIPA review and the ADA are going to have to talk. So that's, I guess what we're saying is, we can notice that note it as a deficiency, but it's not up to the CBA to fix that.
No, but it's up to the building department that, I mean.
I don't think it's up to the building department. I think it's up to the ADA and MIPA, because the applicant. The applicant has to meet the the terms of the requirements of the MIPA condition, which says they have to have a hundred. Square feet of open space and the ADA says you need to have eighty percent impervious ramps. So some that's going to have to work together, but that doesn't.
But if it changes the um. The amount of impervious area.
Yeah.
It does have to do with us.
Except that we don't, except that we don't over, we don't supersede the ADA one MIPA.
No, I know, but they still have to make it all work.
Yeah, so they'd have to come back to us with a new plan.
So shouldn't that be then not checked out because they don't have a new plan?
Well, no, because nothing's happening now. That up to me, it may come back to us when either ADA or MIPA says. You're not in compliance with ours and MIPA says you're not complying with ours and they have to redo the plan to figure out how to be compliant with.
Do they need to be to go to MIPA before they go to the building department?
I don't know, and that's not our, that's not, that's the applicant's responsibility.
To me, that's the definition, not satisfied.
Yeah.
Well, we're talking about our review. That's two different agencies. That's a federal and a state agency that have to, that they have to comply with. It's not up to us. We we can note a deficiency that we think there's a problem, but we can't affect that. So.
But we oversee this, so.
We don't oversee ADA and MIPA. Those are two distinct things.
Can we just go back to number forty five inside the matter?
Twenty five.
And I want to make sure it mirrors the. Decision. And I, I think it's implied, but I want um. We prohibited the converted non-livable space and livable space and expansion of building envelopes. Is struck though existing town requirements that apply to all homes in Nantucket remain valid.
Right.
I want to make sure that those zoning requirements are not waived.
Yeah, that's what it says. And so they have to come if they were, just like in on S H M's path when someone wanted to add.
Okay, I guess I was just looking at this and showing it was.
Yeah.
Struck, but I want to make sure, okay.
Yeah. But we're still subject to the regular. Unless they were, unless it was, unless it was specifically said that it allowed the conversion of non-livable space and paddocks to livable space. And expansion of, they're just, they're still subject to. Zoning. Whatever the existing condition of by law side. All right, so um, forty five, we just talked about that when the grading is incomplete on the site plans. They did provide us, they provided us with the cross sections of the walkouts and the handrails, right?
Yes.
I think.
There were enlarged plans.
I thought, I thought they did, remember they said they were going to do vegetation and sorry. Trees, trash, trash.
Those were those enlarged plans that we got last week, right?
Yeah. Because I thought they were saying that they were just gonna. Mirka, did you do those plans that showed? Oh, it's Bracken?
The cross section. I believe so. The cross section is included in the architectural package with the building.
So these were the uh, cross sections of the walkouts, but I don't think they've been provided.
No, they've been included. I've been told they've been included in the original. Architectural plans for each unit. They have a cross section through the walkouts app.
I'm sorry, what was that last thing you said?
Uh, so the cross sections were included in the workshop packages for the condo units. I believe so. That's what I've been told. Uh, as a cross section, so this should be one of their sheets and I can confirm.
Uh, Mirka, are we talking about building sections or added section for the, sorry?
Yes, the cross cross sections through the building and the walkouts. I know I've seen them part of your packages.
The sections are definitely part of our packages, but it's not an enlarged cross section for the walkouts. That's what we're talking about. It should be eight three hundredths of the section.
No, because we talked about hand, like protection, right? Handrails and Bracken said, I think John said it was going to be. Both shrubbery and like handrails.
Yeah, but I think they'll be provided to see the drainage, the enlarged plans. I don't think anybody provided a section.
And Mr. Chelsey clarified his comments on this.
Yeah, I did.
From forty eight?
Yeah. Forty.
Forty five, sorry.
Right, so Bracken provided details for each building that showed the full contour grading. In the elevations inverts for all the drainage systems for the roof and the yard drains, which is something that was requested in the letter from last Monday. The board was asking about um, cross sections of walkouts and handrails. That was in your draft letter from Monday. That's why that's in my letter. Um, that I didn't see anything like that in any of the data that I've been provided.
So, if I may.
Yes.
We did include the handrails um, the on the top of the walls as a part of the details on my sets. I do not have a cross section, but again, I I just want to confirm something because I thought there were some cross sections. But we just have a handle on top of the walls which would be integrated uh, because they are more than um, thirty inches height. So the all wall which are integrating into the walkouts have a handrail as a part of it. It's on one of the sheets. And also the full planting plan um, is including it, like integrating it in it, in the planting.
That's a by drag by that concrete retaining wall.
I think we've seen that on to the page.
It's on L one fourteen.
Yeah, so I saw some on L one fourteen and then the um, and then the handicap ramps on L one eleven. And I.
And that's all typical details. For all of them.
Right, okay, here, I thought this was what it was, right? Yeah, on L one thirty O one. I think that's from June twenty six. That shows.
This is from A two unit, the other one might be a different.
Right, because didn't we ask them to do the typical. Unit. Right, and here's type A.
Yeah, so before we got those, we didn't have these.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Okay, so I think maybe that was the cross sections of walkouts and handrails. I think we're satisfied. Or no? I think.
Well, I think that's going to be up to the building department to understand the grade change and whether or not a handrail is required to prevent people from falling.
Okay, so let's just leave that in there.
A handrail or.
Yeah. All right, and then. So. Forty nine, E F fifty one and fifty two all have to do with the final fire, the fire department response. Which we don't have because um, the person who has been doing the review is on vacation. Um, so we could. Attach the May ninth letter, the the fire department's concerns, the code red's response. And then make note for the building commissioner that um, we have yet to have confirmation. From the fire department, but before building permit is issued, you should have confirmation that those items that code red responded with. Answer. And address the concerns of the fire department because um, what I read through and I said this to staff yesterday. The applicant's consultant um, responds, but not in a way that as a layperson, I feel like any. It's hard to tell if it's what they're responding with is, yeah, we hear you and this is what we're doing or yes, we hear you and we're answering it and we're doing this. So that needs a response from the fire department, I think.
I do too, because I think the whole, and just raise your structure shall have no parking. And then you should be the response where they said, because you can walk right up to the door, we don't need to buy that.
So.
I think the fire department has to.
Yeah.
Respond to that because that's going to change the parking plan if they do want that.
So I think that the the five nine, five seventeen and six three um, correspondence should all be included and we should. So whether or not we're past our technical review time or not, pursue getting that response from the fire department about. Their.
Again, I want to make note that we have. We don't need the fire department here, just like we didn't need the sewer department here.
Well, no.
We didn't need the water department. You don't need them here. They provided comments, but they were never provided to us.
But it, but.
They didn't what they were supposed to do.
But we did get. Certain boards that said that they, that water, the water flow has been deemed sufficient.
No, but you're saying that because he's on vacation.
No, no, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is that I'm saying we have this letter from five nine from the police, from the fire department. And we have the response from five seventeen for from um, the applicant's consultant that goes through. What all of what they say that that the fire department said were their concerns and they have answers to those. What I'm saying is. I, I'm not, I'm not going to determine that um. When it says FDC shall be five inch, this is the construction item will be addressed at the time of fire protection design or develop. Is the fire department okay with that? I have no idea.
I I think. I think we need to side with our fire department, not their consultants.
No, that's what I'm saying.
I know the consultant refused to discuss things. Their consultants used to discuss them with our fire department. And I just want to leave it as an open issue. I mean, this is a huge health.
I think, I think it'll be open right up until the day that it gets inspected.
Yeah.
I I.
I think we're saying the same thing. I think the fire department. I think we're saying the same thing, I think the fire department needs to, needs to respond, I'm, I'm not willing to just take the consultants.
It should be an open issue bef- and, and resolved before building permit is issued.
Yeah, that's exactly what, if you condition officially says.
Yeah.
Not, 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 not an inspection, I feel.
The plans must be submitted to the department for review and approval.
Right, they haven't. They haven't done that. Well, they haven't submitted it yet, so, but, but we still have to get the building, the fire department still has to um. Um, approve. The plan, the code writing the responses.
Yeah.
Or else Paul cannot issue the building permit.
Right. Um. For the permit, so that, that is an open issue. Um. And then. There's a couple other ones that we still uh. So then um. Okay. Um, she nine at least seven was.
I think management documents, that's upon the applicant, those don't need to be, that's just something that.
Something else. Yeah, that's close to that. Um.
And I'm sure, can I just say, I think this, we're going through this, I really do think that uh, you all did a great job with this um. Long list of the document that we can have available for staff and for Paul.
Oh, yeah.
So they, so when it comes time for submitting a building permit, there's a checklist, you know, we have, you can say, okay, have, have you gone to the fire department? You have. I would have not, and it's. We have, we have, we have something.
Thank you. And now, just for the record, I would say that Billy put a lot of effort, spent the most. Time on this and it was a last minute request and he got it done and he did a really great job.
Yeah.
Great, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So on um, under ninety-seven, um. And look, you know. There's a bunch here, A, C, F, G, J, K, M, P, N, Y, um, all out.
So, um.
Things that need to be addressed on the final construction plans that have to do with some of the provisions. And this maybe is what you were saying earlier about having everything show on one. Yeah, plans instead of having ten different things.
Yeah, I mean, just to make it easier for the building department to view this. So, um.
Good now. Just go back from ninety-seven B, wanting to be more particular. So they struck.
Ninety-seven B.
Yeah. By insurance requirements, right? Uh, but then they added contract in ways, and the installation municipal services shall be secured by the mass subscribe, they reference. Uh, applicable law, which I, I'm not familiar with, but it has to do with the health department. I don't think we've gotten the health department involved at all.
Where is this section? Ninety-seven B?
Ninety-seven B, one fifty and one fifty-two.
Oh, he's looking at something else.
Looking at the decision.
Oh, the half, it's just a bit and a half.
It's not on the scheme. Back there. It's not on it, we didn't.
Okay, come on, what page is it on?
Inch thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, now you can get right here. Conditions ninety-seven B, one fifty, one hundred and two. So that just refers to. That just refers to state law and the requirements are already existing for a development that. Construction of ways and then slowly, that means municipal services. But I think that it's just saying that we, we can't have a, whatever the existing Massachusetts general law for some of those stuff that they're gonna have to follow.
Uh, I just want to make sure. Not really. Um, and I think it's a response required by the board.
I, I think that subdivision control, but.
Oh, yeah, forty-one eighty-one, right, that's subdivision control.
I was thinking of that inside.
I don't know, that is a section, you know. Right, because I was just, I was actually getting come up on this ways, because they're not really, they're not, they're only gonna be the one inch. One and one road and somewhere else in this permit, it says that the developer retains private control of all of those. Um, all of the utilities and road maintenance and all of that, so I forget what condition that is, I'm gonna compare it yesterday.
Right, I mean, typically, typically you all would hold, typically you would hold lots. Subject to a covenant, it's a certain reason, but it's not a subdivision, it's just a single lot.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I, I would, I think sort of like in. Richmond, which I know these are not the same, um, but the, the planning board withheld CEOs on some of the structures. To ensure that the uh, infrastructure was complete, so maybe something like that would be an option, but either way, you have to meet the requirements.
I think we did not. I think we, I think we let held CEOs, that again was a different, my honor. But it does say somewhere in here, and I, I don't remember the exact. Location, but it does say that the, the developer retains private ownership, without them, the town's not responsible more to the owner.
Well, I did, yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, that's a good thing to bring up, because that, that, there was a couple places in the decision. Um, that, there was a couple places in the decision that reference subdivision control, like mentions Form J and things like that, that are applicable. Right, um, which I don't know if they just, if it was like standard language they put in that they didn't. But it doesn't, doesn't help.
So listed on this, you guys, the day specific construction schedule, is that, so that's beyond what we got Monday, because that was sort of not day specific.
Right, I think phase one or.
In day.
Phase one of there. Is stated and then the other ones, right, it was my, it was kind of.
Right, so is that, is what they've given us?
The other one is. Let me get back to that.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that.
The mission will also include contractor, field engineer, construction manager, surveyors, weather and biology specialists and other professionals that will be involved in the implementation of the project. So.
So that's.
That, that wasn't listed in the construction schedule that we've been given so far.
No, but I think it's, I think maybe because it's. But it will.
But it needs to be for an issuance of the. I'm just pointing this was.
Did you have a question, General?
I did, I just. What this thing wanted. You is.
But it's not, that's not applicable, because this forty-one eighty-one is a chapter on subdivision.
Um, well, I don't know about that, and, and there's provisions in there, why would, why would you have? Uh, make that determination, and there's also, you know, pay a deposit of money for negotiation by security supervision. And even about the planning board to secure the performance of the construction of ways and insulation, insulation is services. I mean, I think. That's, that's all they're saying here, right, what we put in, but there's still a requirement here.
Right, so in the event that there are municipal services and ways, then it would. But it's, I think it has to do with that subdivision control law though, right? I mean.
It is, and we can certainly look into if they need to do something uh, to secure the installation of the infrastructure or not later. But it's nothing to do with your technical error today, so why don't we put that on hold for another time or three days?
And I think there's another place in here that talks, that talks about. Something similar.
Well, uh, the decision references ninety-seven B, one fifty, one fifty-two, whichever it was. Similar concept.
Were you gonna ask about this one?
Oh, I'm just, now, it was just retaining walls, what does that mean? And, okay.
I, I listed it based on one of John Chassie's summers, it was, it was listed in there, so I just transferred it over.
Okay.
Then, um, I had one-on-one. With no later, the, the submission of initial building permit application, the application I've submitted applicable to the proposed project for the board. Or said later, represented property different parties, homeowners association declaration that cross, association budget and declaration of restrictions.
So that's.
But that didn't get it to us.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
So then we'll have ability to comment on it?
Yeah.
Okay. So. That will come back in front of us before Paul issues, well, before they submit a building permit application.
No later than the submission of the initial.
Exactly, so that's even before they submit the application.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, they'll just submit to us. At the same time, yeah, you guys will, okay, John, thank you, your help was really great today.
You can, thank you.
And that's a submission as a safe issuance.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I wanna, well, I don't know if that should be listed in the edition, you can say. Because it's not that.
Well, no, but they haven't, they haven't applied the initial golden permit, it's, it's outside of this review, it's like the next.
Oh, yeah, I guess so, okay.
So when they submit all that or the fact that it's not. They have to submit. Um. The signage, I. Think. Again, not later than the date when the first request for a building permit is filed and recorded, that the building permit is issued. And I think, um, I think John Bracken said that we would, we'd have to ask for some signage.
And, okay, and the only comment I had is one forty-seven, it's listed under conditions prior issuance of certificate of occupancy, but one forty-seven. Says that that payment needs to be made upon full issuance of initial building permit, so I just want to make sure that that's. I don't think it should be listed.
It's six hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
That's gotta be pulled out somehow and made clear that it needs to be. Issued prior to the building permit, it needs to be paid prior to the building.
I think that's why I was, why, like, I think that's why. That's there, but I agree that it is.
It's not obvious.
It's, it. One forty-seven.
Because it's under the heading of conditions prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, but it require, it has a requirement. That's based on the issuance of the building.
So maybe we should add.
One forty-seven?
One forty-seven. Under the conditions um, prior to the building permit. We can also just make a list, right, of all the things that are prior to the building permit, we could make a.
That's what I think might be.
Our, our cheat sheet has prior to.
No, I know what you're saying.
Conditions.
Oh. It's kind of like.
So I think it would be helpful for Paul perhaps to have a list of everything he needs to have in front of him and maybe we can just get a copy of it. Before he issues the building permit. It's, it's really, it's really clear.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, sure, I mean. And again, if the applicant doesn't do it. Then. Then I'm gonna get the. He can submit a report upon the issuance of the initial building.
Yeah.
So they'll have to pay it before they get the comment.
Right, I just wanna make sure that that's, that's in the board.
Some. So we can, can we just attach this whole, yeah, cheat sheet to this letter so that. And it says on the, this letter, the board also notes a following conditions for private action, the board's approval and review. We could have a list of action, but it just says, the, the last paragraph says, the board also notes the following conditions required action before approval, we could just say. Um, the board also notes, um. We know. That there are several conditions that require attention and, and please reattach memorandum. From staff.
Either the conditions that are required prior to issuance of the.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
But I think that these things aren't, this is.
Mm-hmm.
I feel, I mean, even if they're not.
Yeah, it's.
They should be listed. So I think there should be a letter.
I mean, it wouldn't be.
Because it's a lot. I agree with adding this document to the. Um. Letter.
Right, so with this, with the letter, we can have the memo that staff put together. The appendix A about the stormwater regulations that Patrick did and the um, information regarding the fire. Right?
Wait, what do you want, information?
Like the, the memo, this may set the June sixth course on it. Yeah. Saying that this needs response from the fire department, that we, it's just all together. And it's not, you just, it's just, you know, exhibit one, see exhibit one, see exhibit two.
I also uh, would like to propose that we. In here acknowledge that. Under ninety-seven, the conditions for student commencement of project, the developer has commenced. Uh, what if you call it rating and disturbance or been charged by. Eliminating uh. It's, it's commenced, and I know they did it. So they take their chances, but really. None of those things have been delivered from. Prior to their commencing.
So would you suggest that we put a note in there that says, since the letter's going to the developer, um. That, um. You know. For the hack decision or per local. By law, you proceed at your own risk. Um. If you move forward without meeting these conditions.
We just acknowledged that. They started construction, the party about construction.
I don't, I don't think they did, I don't, I think we talked about that, um, I mean. That they were, what, what they did in putting in the split rail fences and uh, delineating those buffer zones were part of their NH ESP permit and.
That's fine, but that's still. Under this permit. Uh. The, this, that's considered, just like.
But again.
Rating.
But again, it says in here, um, conditions seventy-something, I think it is, that they have that, um. Yes. Um, here, the project shall comply with all rules, regulations, filing and permit requirements and certifications. Um, by the mass native species and NH ESP, NH ESP, so that permit, right? And maybe I'm speaking wrong, but I thought that when we discussed all this, we need to, we determined that that permit allowed for that limited scope of work, so it.
It happened right then.
Yeah, and that's why they didn't get it. Remember, someone called the police and then it was.
I, I think you get, I think the permit is fine, but this is kind of a general, just because you have a permit, doesn't mean you can do it. Nothing, nothing. Nothing should happen on the property, lose the permit until these things are delivered. And it makes sense because what? I, I mean, you need to go do things without, they could just go do it without having any of these items.
They could, but they do it at their own risk. But I think we can put that in the letter, like you, you're, you know, any deviation from, any deviation from the permit. You, you're, you're at your own risk. And I think that's, that's true on. Any, any problem.
So what exactly is it that you want to add?
So I guess I was, I was thinking that this was, I was thinking this was going. To Paul, but I think just so everyone's on the same page, I know this is going to. Mr. Feeling himself at your council. I think it's helpful, like we're referencing appendix A that complies with D E P stormwater regulations, including.
So you know, I understand.
Oh, sorry.
What gentleman.
Oh, sorry.
I, I think it should be acknowledged on that.
Have they, any, 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 any construction they do with or any commencement of the project without?
Including the removal of trees.
I don't think, I'm, that's, I don't even think it had that because that's, that supersedes the NH ESP permit that gave them permission to do that. So I, I think we can say. Any, any action taken. Outside of the, the dict, the. They take of the, of the decision, you do it at your own risk. That's. That's just, that's stating the obvious and that's true for any project. Lisa, you've been quiet. Do you have any, are there any other conditions that you had questions about or, or thought were deficient that we should include? I know you would speak up if you did, so.
I am following along and. Everything that I have been concerned about has been addressed. In one way or another so far. So I know I'm being quiet and it's odd, but I'm, I'm here and I'm listening. And. Here's a question that I guess I'm jumping ahead, but. Is, is. Are we voting? Today, today we're voting on, is it, is there a vote today?
Yes.
And the vote is. Just so I'm thinking ahead properly, the vote is. If we vote yes, we are putting forward our concerns based on the hacks. You know, list of, of, of items. And it means that we're an approval of the list. Of our questions and concerned, concerns based on that. And if we vote no. That basically means that we don't support the letter that Billy drafted. And sent to us. And nothing gets. The developer has, doesn't have to. Follow through on any of the points. Is that, is that how it goes?
Kind of, I think we're, we're, we are voting to. Say that the plan, either we say the, the, the plan complies. Or we're saying, we, we think it complies except for these things that aren't our. Deficiencies are, are not.
Not. Okay.
And, and. And if we do nothing, then the pack decision.
Rules.
Stands as is and without any comment from us about. Things being that we, that we note that there are problems that, that need, that should be and need to be addressed.
Okay, got it. I, I just thinking ahead, I'm trying to foresee.
How. It's an odd, it's an odd vote because it's, we're not, we're not really approving or denying. We're just. We're noting, we're noting that. Either it complies or it doesn't comply and here's why.
There basically were not a. Other letters.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, because if we, because if we don't vote, if we do nothing, if we didn't even meet today.
Then it stands as is.
If we just go through and it stands. And so we're saying, we understand that this is the decision that. The town is subject to. But here's where we think there are some problems with it, where it doesn't, it doesn't mesh up and it needs, and, and here, here it needs to be addressed.
Okay. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm filing the letter, but I don't. I don't, I don't think it's in harmony with the zoning board's final decision because of these things. So my take would be to say it's not, we're, we're not just rejecting it outright, but. We're saying it still needs to be, these things need to be addressed for it to be. So can we reword that to say? We do not agree with it, that it's in harmony unless.
Well, we agree that.
Jesse agrees with this, that it's in general harmony with the zoning board.
Well, yeah, I guess we're, we don't, I don't, I mean, based on. The decision that we, the comp comment that we voted on, that was struck down by hack or. Edited by half, like we, yeah, we don't, this isn't what we, the zoning board originally wanted, but this is what we have. And so I think what we're saying is. We're not even saying we, we're not even saying we bless this plan or we love this plan or this is what then we want. We're saying, given the plan that we have from the decision. We're not making a judgment either way on the good or the bad about it. We're just saying this is how it doesn't, it doesn't, we've done a review. These are the things that we found that don't match up and need to be addressed. And it doesn't matter whether we think it's a good plan, a bad plan.
Right.
We, we're not, I don't think we're endorsing it or, or not. We're just saying here's some problems that need to be addressed.
Can I suggest a motion? And George Pucci, correct me if you think this should be something else. But maybe to approve the plans in conformance with the comp permit as amended by the H A C decision. With the deficiencies as noted in the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three letter. From the board to the developer. I mean, the, the language says approve the plans.
You know, which I don't want.
And maybe there's something else that they can say.
We're approving it because it's part of the hack, the hack decision. I mean, we.
And people are approving it. Yeah, I mean, I don't feel like I'm approving the plans. I am going along with it.
Right.
I'd rather use a different term if I can.
But I guess we have to.
Is Mr. Pucci having?
George, do you have, do you have any opinions on that?
I thought that what Leslie proposed would work perfectly fine. You could always add more, you know, that. Conformance, add a couple of words of that is conforms with the. Approved plan set as revised by H A C. And you can always note that. You know, if you're, if you're contemplating putting something in writing, you can always note some dissenting opinion or something like that. I mean, I've even seen that in approved comprehensive permit decisions. That a board votes something. You know. And. You know, unlike other Z B A decisions, you only need a majority vote for a forty B, but I've seen, you know, three to two decisions or two to one decisions and. It'll be a little paragraph from a, you know, the dissenting board member's opinion. Other times they don't sign it. Other times they just note their, you know, vote against and then they sign it. There's any number of alternatives. So if you, I don't have any problem with a board member noting. Something substantive that, you know. We're doing this, you know, despite the fact that I don't like these plans or whatever it is that, that you want to note. You know, as long as you're addressing. The substantive issue, which is, I think Elisa had articulated this is that, gee, if you do nothing. Then you've relinquished any kind of say over this before it goes to the building inspector.
Yes, that is my concern that by default, it would go back to the H A C. You know, list. And then all of our work and all of our suggestions and concerns would then be null and void.
Right. And it kind of leaves the building inspector to, you know, to start from scratch when he gets everything without really having the benefit of your input.
Okay, that's good to know. So by voting a yay would then. Put forward our concerns and by number, what we've been pointing out that we need more information or definition or clarification on. Is that correct, George?
So I think we could say.
Is there any, is there an obligation for the developer to comply with these, George?
Well, if you noted legitimate issues about planned deficiencies or inadequate submissions. The applicant would really be acting at their peril to not address legitimate issues and to just go into the building inspector. You know, for in effect, a different type of. Decision. So that, you know, that's why I've said from day one, you really want to focus on legitimate technical issues. And then you'll just have to see what the applicant does with that. But, but yeah, you're right. In terms of what you're implying that. The developer really is under no obligation. They can proceed at risk. They can go ahead after your review process is done and file their application for a building permit and seek a decision. And they can go ahead, you know, with that risk construction. They can do all of that. But, but again, you know, you, you want to, I, I would assume a modicum of good faith on any type of responsible developer that when you know. Plan deficiencies, the developer is going to try to. Correct that before they go in for a building permit.
May I also just interject one more thought? So. But there's, we have, we have a filtration system called the building department and the different departments. That would, that these issues would then get figured out once the applicant, the developer goes to get. A permit or approval from these different boards on the items. For the most part that we have concerns with. Is that?
Absolutely.
What I want to know is what are the items that would not be. Would not get attention from a building department or, or, you know, health department or a. You know, different, any different department. What are the items that wouldn't get caught in the permitting process? That we've brought attention to that. Would never have to be addressed, but they would still be able to get proper permitting. And then also able to get certificates of occupancy without addressing.
I mean, that depends on the issue. I, yeah, I, I just can't answer that hypothetically.
So George, Elisa, so that kind of question, you know, would be something that would happen as a head wrap in, in, or. In any process, but the only thing that they, that the applicant gets. Waiver from is the, the zoning by law. And we, I don't believe, we didn't grant waivers for super fees or anything like that. Like they would have, if they were going to not have to comply with anything. They would have to have asked for and been granted waivers for those. And so they'll have to go through the rest of it. They go through the typical. Process for this type of development. And like you said, I, I like that word you used of filtration, like we, we do have all of those. Things in place for them to go through. So.
I don't, so I don't think you have for waivers after they asked for.
No, no, that was true. That was a long time ago.
They could.
Yeah, they could, but.
So, so I'm hearing that.
Can I just, can my phone go?
Let, let Jim go. Go first. What I'm hearing is there, there isn't necessarily. An edict for the. Developer to comply with these. Necessarily. And I'm not even sure what happens if they don't.
Well, I think what George was saying was that they would, like anything else, they would continue at their peril if we have legitimate. Issues like the parking doesn't match and they're applying for a building permit that doesn't match. What's been approved, then they're going to have a problem. So we're, we're, we're saying to them here, look. Yes, the, the plan complies with the hack decision, except for you, you've got sixty three extra feet on this. You've got, you, you don't have. The specific construction schedule, you, you don't have, you've got retaining walls that are too close to drainage systems or whatever that is and. That they're gonna, they, if they don't address those, it'll be at their own risk and maybe their peril and may affect their building permit.
But will also mean they won't get their certificate of occupancy and then people are not allowed to move in. Isn't that true?
Sure. But I think, I think the bigger issue present, Elisa, I think you, you said it. Well, if we, if we're silent on this, then.
Goes back.
It just stands as is and these, and these, these. Concerns aren't ever, aren't really brought up. But I do like what George said about if we want to add a paragraph in here to the developer in this letter thing, you know. It complies, however, the board still has serious concerns about the density scope and whatever. We can, we can do that.
So I just want for my purpose to get clarification. So for instance, I've not put you on the spot. But if these things weren't addressed by the developer, would you not issue a permit? Not sure. I'd have to, I'd have to see what issues were or weren't addressed and then maybe determination at that point. I mean, I think the developer is. Aware that the, the board's concerned about these issues and he's going to work to fix them. If he can't, that's a conversation we have to have, but. I, I think I have an obligation to give him a building permit. Even if the record, for example, even if the recreation building is sixty three square feet. Okay. There you have.
Yeah. That's not a surprise though, is it?
Well, I thought if it doesn't meet the comprehensive permit, why would it probably be issued?
So why are we putting this down if we're?
That's, that's a surprise to me.
At their own peril.
Yeah, they have, but they, they have to comply with the conditions in the hack decision.
Right. So why would they get a building permit if they're not?
First sixteen thirty.
I mean, that's, that's a, I'm just curious. That's an example of one.
Well, that's really the big picture. Repercussions of all of this work that we're trying to figure out the answers to. How is it going to look down the line? As we're making all of these points. How does that filtration system work and what are the things that? Don't go through the filtration system that will just get overlooked and nobody has to comply and nothing's enforceable. I just, I'm just trying to, the big picture is what I'm thinking about now and the, you know, the next three years, how it's going to look. But I also don't want to vote against. All of the very good points that have been made that highlight the deficiencies. And highlight where the developer needs to be accountable on certain things. So. I'm, I'm. In a. I'm in a little quandary about.
We all are. I mean, it's a very, it's a very uncomfortable position to be in because at one, at one side. You know, we want to make sure that these deficiencies are noted. And on the other side, this isn't what I don't think. Any of us would have liked to have seen and we don't have a lot of power, if any, because if we do nothing, the hack decision stands and.
But that's my question. If the hack decision says this terms for footage, why would they get issued a permit?
Well, I think what Paul said was he would have to look at those issues and then make a decision based on what's submitted to him. At this point, we're saying. Hey, guys, this, do you, this is sixty three feet off. Did this get approved as a insubstantial change like it did here? Maybe they have to go back to hack and say, look, we want to have a sixty three square feet. We have to do that, or maybe it's something Park can decide on his end. That's not our, that's not our decision to make at that point. Our decision, our job right now is just to finish this tech, technical review that says. Here's what was approved. Here's what we've seen. The, these do not. Match. And, and I personally would rather. See this. Move forward as it will, whether or not we vote and, and submit this letter to, to the developer or not. But I would like to at least have, after we've done all of this work, at least be able to say. Here's where we think that this does not match up and where you need to. Address some concerns that, that. And then they do or they don't, but to just not do anything.
May I also? May I also just, um, point out or ask? By voting, someone, I don't remember now, maybe it was you that said by voting, we're not saying I approve. The hack decision or are we? Or by voting yes, we're just simply saying we acknowledge the hack. All of the hack, the list that hack came up with. And here are our. Uh, comments, questions, suggestions, ideas. Based on theirs and that, and we approve, what, what, what I would. Want to make sure I'm approving is I approve. The, um, issues. That we have that we think. The developer needs to address. I'm not necessarily.
That's what the letter does. We're not, we're using approve in the, in the terms of yay and nay votes, not. I personally approve of this project, right? Like we're saying.
Or just.
That we, we're approving the plan that they submitted with the deficiencies. That we've known.
I just wanted, yeah, make that clear because I think the original motion that was suggested said we're approving this project.
No.
Right. And I want to make sure that's not the wording that I approve.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so we should just have to work on that. Um, because, and I just, you know, my own, and I'm not against approving the letter at all. I just, um. Am frustrated at. The lack of information and it's been coming in sort of in drips and drought and it's been very. Difficult to get clear pictures and I feel like we're being pushed into doing something very quickly, which I think. Would deserve a little bit more time.
We are.
Yeah, which, which is, that's my, that's my frustration. I know.
I mean, it says every zoning board in Massachusetts, I'm sure. Yes.
Can I ask, uh? Leslie to again read what her suggested motion was with Mr. Pucci's additions and edits.
Let me see how I can do. Uh, to approve the plans. As being in conformance with the comprehensive permit as amended by the H A C decision. With the deficiencies as noted in the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three letter. And then would also add in a reference to, um, being in conformance or substantial conformance with the H A C approved plans. But it's conformance with the comp permit and the H A C decision and the H A C approved plans. Except for the deficiencies which you're noting in this letter.
Something about that sounds contradictory.
Heck it.
Sounds contradictory.
Well, Michael's made a, Michael's made a motion. So what, what do you think?
We're saying we approved, we're, we're saying we approved, but.
Right. We approve but for. We approve except for X, Y, and Z. So we're saying like. The, the, the recreation area is, right, we approve of how the plan looks except for the. Parking, the amount of trash cans, the, um, you know, all of the things that we did. So it's not contradictory, it's just carving out.
Yeah, it's not just how it looks.
Deficiencies.
It's for conformance with. The approved plans as amended by H A C.
Exactly.
But for noted deficiencies.
Exactly.
It's not contradictory and you're not approving the project or anything like that. You're, what the letter is saying. What Leslie's motion is doing is you're, you're. Addressing it specifically in the context of the review of the, the final plan review this before you.
Mm-hmm.
But does the.
Make a moment?
No, hold on, wait. I don't, Elisa, I think we have a motion. We, we have a motion. Um.
Can you read that in, can we read it again?
Just read it one more time and see if you still have your question, Elisa.
All right, let me try to just clean this up a little bit. Okay, so you're going to, the motion is to approve the plans as being in conformance with the comprehensive permit. As amended by the H A C decision and the H A C approved plans. Um, it. Uh, except for the deficiencies as noted in the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three letter. Where is this? And, and the attachment.
And the attachment.
By Chesia Consulting Services.
Yeah.
Okay. So Michael's made that motion.
And that to include. The, uh. Recent addition.
And, but the, um, the, the attachments are not just the Cheshire because it's also the fire and the stabbing.
And those will be referenced.
Yeah, okay.
And, and can we hold that motion in, wasn't it Jim's potential amendment?
Uh, yeah.
Just to.
Um, I'd like to propose an amendment to, to change the wording of deficiencies. To non-conformities. I mean, deficiencies are losing huge return. Uh, using the same example, sixty three square feet. What you're kind of saying is. It's the minimus, but that's not how this works. It works. Each check, that's an example of something that they come before the board. We make a determination whether it's substantial or non-building inspector. Uh, and then go forward. So. I don't want to just call it deficiency. I'm not going to call it non-conforming.
In, in zoning. I, I think non-conformities is a pretty powerful word.
Yeah.
And, and. In forty Bs, what's non-conforming in regular zoning isn't non-conforming in a forty B.
Is that, is that. Is that correct, George?
What?
Can we, we're talking about using the word, uh, where the plan is non-conforming versus using the word deficient. And I, I mean, I only have been using the word deficiency because that was. Back when we first talked about what we were going to be deciding on, it was looking at the plan and finding deficiencies. And so that's just the word I've stuck with. But if that's a better word.
I, I didn't have a problem with either word. I think it both expresses the same thing. I, I should note though. I don't have anything legally. Wrong about what Mr. Mondani proposed as an amendment, but. On your other members' concern, it, it is a loaded word that has other meanings. Um, in that context is a term of art. And so if deficiencies avoids that type of confusion or use of a term of art. In a place where it's not normally used, that's a valid consideration for not amending it to, from deficient to. Uh, can, you know, non-conforming. So I, I don't, I don't have a problem either way. But it is certainly a legitimate concern, you know, noted against amending it to, to that word.
And, and you said, I forgive me if I, if I'm wrong, but did you say you did not like the word, um. Uh, in conflict or contradicting?
I don't think it fits with what Leslie said. Yeah. So I'm sorry.
Well, we could say except for the following, can, the following, which are in conflict.
With the.
With, with the.
Hack decision. I, I guess the point in conflict or with non-conforming, not all of these bullet points even included are actual.
Yeah.
Some of them are, yeah, some are suggestions.
All right.
So are actual non-conformities or conflicts or deficiencies. I think you should do something more broad.
I, I think, I think deficiencies, um.
Insufficiencies?
Or you, or you could say but for the deficiencies and or inconsistencies noted. You, you could add a little bit to the word deficiency.
That's better.
I mean, I, I, I would have left Leslie's motion as, as made by Mr. Mirror alone. But, you know, I, I don't have a problem. It, it, you're saying the same thing, but I mean, the initial motion was pretty well. Crafted, you know, on the fly here, but.
I like both words.
Yeah, so, okay, so, um.
So I'm, I'm willing to amend my motion.
Okay, let's second that motion.
What include?
Include deficiencies or inconsistencies as noted below.
No, in. Wasn't, wasn't the word inconsistencies?
I don't, well, we, in zoning, we use the word non-conforming a lot. But the, Michael's point was, is that in forty B, what's non-conforming generally is conforming. So it might make it more confusing rather than saying deficiencies and inconsistencies. And if, the thing is they are inconsistent. They're, they're not this, they're not the same. So they need to match.
Gotcha.
I just, it, it opens a door for approving, just going on. Just building it despite this concern. It's all. And that's.
But I think that exists, unfortunately, that exists in a.
But, you know, forty B's, I would, um, any little change. We don't say, oh, that's, but it's not conformity.
No, but we don't, we, we're not there yet.
We are.
We're not there yet. That'll be once. We will, we.
Permit was approved thirty days after whatever George says.
Yeah.
And that's, and so it's, it's in place, that's what George is saying.
Yeah.
Anything different is a change.
Yeah.
And then come back.
And they'll have to come back.
But this is, this is the process.
Right, but they haven't applied for the building permit yet. So once they, then, then they'll, they'll come back to us for changes.
If, they, they might not do anything for two years and if they change it, then it comes before us. So it has nothing to do with building.
I mean, if Beach Plum comes back to us for stuff, I don't know.
Sometimes.
Yeah, when they have to. Um, all right. So Michael has made a motion. Um, I'll second it. Um.
Sorry, one more time. Mind reading it one more time? I'm so sorry.
Okay.
The motion.
Approve the plan. To approve the plans as being in conformance with the comprehensive permit as amended by the H A C decision. And the H A C approved plans with deficiencies as noted in the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Letter and associated attachments. Oh, deficiencies or inconsistencies, sorry.
Okay, so. So.
An amendment, or do I need to do this as an amendment to have? To have a dissent.
Well, that will be obvious by the vote.
Well, I'd like to.
Assuming.
I just want to make sure if I, I didn't miss that.
I mean, I, I don't think you did. If you want to have a dissenting. I think, um, when it gets signed, it'll say like dissent or dissent.
What do you say? Uh, Jordan, you're saying you can write a dissent. So I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I, I'm sorry, Susan, I spoke without kind of going through you and I interrupted Mr. Mara.
I just don't want to get into.
Yeah, yeah, because, so a couple of things on, on. On a couple of things on Mr. Mondani's question is. You, you could either. Talk about a paragraph now that you'd want to add to the letter or to the vote. Or Mr. Mondani could issue something himself. Um. Uh. You know, that, that would be formally issued. Uh, some, you know, it doesn't have to be thirty pages, but a paragraph saying that, you know.
That's a better.
Whatever his concerns are, or, or as, or as the member indicated, the vote indicates, you know, that there was dissent on it. Um, so again, there's no exact right answer on this. There's a multitude of ways of doing it. But you're. It's sounding like you're close to not being able to vote something acceptable that you would put into the letter as like a dissenting. Uh, section, but I'm not telling you not to. So I, I'm just saying there's many ways to do it. Um, if you want to do it. And there's many ways to not do it if you don't want to do it and just indicate it by the vote.
Okay, so I made the motion, I mean, sorry, Michael made the motion. I seconded, uh. So we'll, we'll just do a roll call on this amended motion. So myself, I, Lisa Badachelli, um, Elisa Allen.
I. I.
Michael O'Mara.
I.
And Jim Mondani.
No.
I'm sorry, Jim, or anyone else who wants to. If you do have a dissent, um, I guess just email us and complain to staff. Does anybody have anything else that they want to talk about today? Um, I just want to say thank you to everybody that's on, that, on this meeting for all of your time and effort, sending for everyone in this room. Um, and everyone in this room for all of the time and effort you all put into this really, really. Mom, really, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, motion to adjourn. Everyone in favor, say aye. Aye, okay.
Aye.
Thanks. Bye, everyone. Thank you. Bye.